Good evening. We will call the common council order. I will ask our clerk to call the roll. Alderman Chuplaski. Here. Roy and I are here for the city's lightest man, is excused, Freyke.
Here.
Roach, here. Metalli.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
And Berzak.
Here.
That's eight present. We have a quorum. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Chuplaski.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have five items up for public hearing this evening. I'm going to ask our clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvements listed on the agenda for removal and construction of the concrete alley pavement, stormwater, and storm under drain.
Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, this is the public hearing for the five alleys that we're proposing to do this summer. Here's the procedure for tonight. I'll discuss the project's scope and cost. I'll discuss the assessment rates and methods of payment. Then we'll have a time for questions and comments from the common council, and then a time from citizens. Then the public hearing will be closed, and the project will be referred to the Public Works Committee for a discussion and a possible vote tonight. And then it would possibly come back here to the full council for a recommendation later tonight. So here's the five alleys. The first one, this didn't get labeled, but this is 91st to 92nd, Montana to Dakota. This alley dates back to 1963, so it's 56 years old. We usually expect to get about 50 years out of a concrete pavement. The next alley is 14 feet wide. It's from 90th to 91st, Rogers to Beecher. This concrete is from 1950, so it's 69 years old. That makes it one of the oldest alleys, I believe, in the entire city. So at 69 years old, it's got potholes in it. The third alley is from 94th to 96th, from Harding to Cleveland. That alley dates to 1968. It's 51 years old. That alley is 18 to 20 feet wide. Then the fourth alley is from 77th to 78th, Unit Pacific to Hicks. We're actually only doing the parts highlighted. This part is in decent shape. So this alley actually dates back to 1930, so that part is 89 years old. Then they did resurface it in 1976, so the asphalt on top here is 43 years old, and the concrete under here is 89 years old. And then the last alley is from 60th to 62nd, from Greenfield to Orchard. The east-west portion actually was done when Walgreens was built, but we are just talking about this part here that was built in 1928. So that's 91 years old, and then they did resurface it in 1973, so this asphalt is 46 years old on top of 91-year-old concrete, which is under here. So, very old alley. Here's just a few more pictures from some of the alleys. This is 91-92, Montana to Dakota, horrible potholes. This is the one, 77-78, railroad to Hicks. The routine maintenance at this point is very difficult, very expensive, to keep filling all these potholes. This one has a very unusual settling problem. From 94-96, Harding to Cleveland, almost half the entire length has settled very badly. This is the other alley at 91-92, Montana to Dakota. This is what we call alligator cracking. This is the final stages of a pavement's life when it looks like this. This is what it should look like, and this is what it will look like when we're all done. This will be a new, these will be new concrete alleys with a very pronounced V in the middle, so the water will drain in the middle like it's supposed to. We will be putting in underdrain and sucking up a lot of the water that's under the alley. Here's some more information. Each alley will take about 25 days. We've been doing this for about 20 years, and they pretty much always get done in 25 days. Like I said, the work will include storm sewer and underdrain under the alley, which is something that was not there previously. So a lot of that water that maybe made the alley deteriorate is going to be sucked into this underdrain. There will be a five-inch crushed stone base, which probably wasn't there previously. And then we'll have a new seven-inch concrete alley with the centerline V that I was talking about. In order to form the alley, we probably, in many cases, will have to take about two feet of the private driveway, which we will put back in the same condition that we found it. If it's asphalt, we'll put back asphalt. If it's concrete, we'll put back concrete. But that's just to get the forms in on both sides of the alley, to form it up, and then we will fill in the private driveways later. The homeowners may contact the contractor to have the entire driveway done if they would like to, but that would be between the homeowner and the contractor if they want to do that. The homeowners will have to park on the street during the time when the alley is being paved. You can park on the street without a permit. The police will be advised that people's alley is being done, so there's no need for a permit in that situation. There will be several sustainability benefits to the construction we're doing. The gravel we use will be 100% recycled crushed concrete from old pavements. We'll be using recycled fly ash from electric plants in the concrete to reduce the mining for new cement. And then the asphalt, the new asphalt will be made from 20 to 35% old recycled asphalt to reduce any mining or drilling for new materials for asphalt. Here's the cost of all five alleys together. About $289,000 to do the five alley pavements. One alley does have some sanitary work, which is fairly rare. And then all the alleys will have the storm sewer that I talked about for $147,000, so half a million dollars to do five alleys. The assessment rates are graduated, so you pay for what you get. If you have a 14-foot alley, you pay $30 per foot. If you have a 20-foot alley, you pay $36 a foot. So you're paying for what you get, not paying for what you don't get. Here's how the project... Oops. Sanitary sewer that I mentioned is coming out of a special little sanitary sewer utility fund. The storm sewer that I talked about is coming from the storm sewer management, stormwater management system funds, so that's 29%. 29% is also coming from the general tax, property tax fund, which everybody pays in the city, almost everybody. And then the special assessments for the budding property owners is also about 29%. So the majority of the funding is coming from citywide fees. So sample residential assessment for a 14-foot alley, if you have a 30-foot lot, the rate that I talked about was $30.31 per foot. So your total cost would be $909.30. The bills, in this case, would not be mailed out until March of 2020, so not 2019, but 2020. Payment options when you get the bill would be that you could pay it off as a lump sum, or you could put it on a five-year plan, or a 10-year installment plan. If you chose the 10-year plan, assuming 4% interest, the special assessments would range from $127 to the first year, 2020, to $95 for the whole year in 2029. So why do we special assess? Well, for over 110 years, city residents have historically paid the full cost of a new street or alley in front of their property because they're enjoying this unique benefit from this improvement to their property. As I said, on this project, the city is collecting $144,000, so that's about 29% of the total cost in this case. But the assessment rates are the same for all residential properties anywhere in the city. Doesn't matter how high the actual bid prices are, or where you live, or how much traffic is in your alley. Everybody pays exactly the same, the $30 or whatever width alley you have. Everyone is treated equally. I just wanted to point out that for over 100 years, Wisconsin state law has allowed for special assessments, and over that 100 years, there have been over 100 court cases in which judges have upheld this law's fair and reasonable method to recoup these costs. So this method has certainly stood the test of time. Special assessments are the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, and railroads pay their fair share. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though 430 properties in the city do not pay any property taxes. And many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, and county parks are very large pieces of property that actually encompass about 28% of the total land area of the city. So they are only contributing to the city's costs through these special assessments. Likewise, businesses, corporations, and manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to ensure that they contribute their fair share because of extra traffic and so on. Their assessment rates are from $45 to $54 per foot. This is what I was just saying. These are the 430 properties, all the shaded properties, the 430 properties that are tax-exempt that don't pay any city property taxes. This just points out that these are the only funds, the special assessments are the only funds that a lot of these shaded areas are paying to the city, which is why, one of the reasons why we do this. Now, this map shows all the, the shading shows all the different colors, shows where people have paid special assessments in the past 10 years. The different colors represent different years, but you can see, at least on the east end of the city, almost everyone has paid their fair share, or everyone has paid at least for their street, if not also for their street and their alley in the last 10 years. So everyone is paying their fair share, I guess is the bottom line I'm trying to point out here. Many of you have probably paid for your street previously. I know Rogers, Cleveland, some of those streets have been done in the past few years. It's not unusual. 10,000 parcels out of the total 19,000 parcels in the city do pay for more than one side of their property. So that's 55% of the people. And then 7400 parcels out of the 19,000 are paying for their street and their alley. So that's 38% of the parcels in the city are in the same situation. And then there's another 3400 parcels out of the 19,000 that pay for two or more streets. So that's about 17%. So the majority of people are paying for more than one side of their property, for either their street and their alley, or two streets. Why do we charge 4% interest? Well, the city borrows the funds for this project, and the city is paying interest to these municipal bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city is merely passing along these interest charges to any residents that choose the five- or 10-year payment plan. The city's not making a profit off of that interest that we are charging. There will, like I said, have to be some parking on the street during construction, during those 25 days. Usually during the first 10 days or so, when they're putting the sewer in, you can probably still get into your alley, get into your garage. It's just those last 15 days when you're probably going to have to park on the street while the concrete is being poured and getting hard. But like I said, on-street parking permits would not be needed. Police will be patrolling the neighborhood. If you have a special situation where you need a disabled parking space on the street, we can do that. We can put a sign like this up if you have any of these, you know, placards or license plates. That's something, if you have that situation, please see me, and we can make arrangements for that. Here's a little bit of the schedule. The city is hoping to advertise for bids starting on May 29th. The bid opening would then be on June 12th. The city does not get to pick the contractor. According to state law, we do have to take the low bidder. Then on June 18th, the council would award the contract, and we would hope to begin the work by about July 15th. Each of the alleys would have the 25-day deadline, like I said. Hopefully, all five alleys would be done by November 15th. The contractor would be posting a performance bond to guarantee their work, and the contractor would be assessed a $1,000 per day penalty if the work goes past the 25-day deadline or past the November 15th deadline. So at this point, if there's any comments or questions, we can hear them now.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Are there any comments or questions from the members of the common council? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience that have comments or questions on this item? We ask that you give us your name and address for our record, please.
John Neer, 2800 block on South 92nd Street, 4th District. I'm trying to try to keep this under three minutes if I can. Would it be cheaper if we just made, I'm talking about the 2800 block from Dakota to Montana? It'd be cheaper just to make it 16 feet wide because they only plow 12 feet of it in the wintertime anyway. Also, that pitch on that alley, everything runs into the middle. When the plow goes over it, you have this much of an air gap, which winds up being iced over. So you have your ruts. When you get down to the end of the alley by 91st Street, it goes up and over the sidewalk. If I had 300 pounds in the trunk or something in my backseat, the bottom of my car scrapes on the sidewalk rather than keeping the alley straight and dipping down the sidewalk.
Well, we can look at that.
Okay.
Sure.
Right, the other thing I'm thinking about, you could be putting a storm drain down the whole alley.
Sure, yes.
Why? There's a natural pitch already.
There's a lot of water under the alleys. I've been an inspector in a lot of alleys, and they're just very wet because a lot of the yards are draining that way. There's a lot of water under the alley, then the alleys get wet underneath, and then that deteriorates the concrete underneath from the bottom. So it'll help preserve the alley, make it last longer.
All right, so that's just putting more holes in the concrete so the water can get in to run underneath the concrete.
Well, no, I mean, there'll be the same number of catch basins, but I'm saying there's going to be a pipe with, like, an underdrain, like, with little holes.
I know there's a pipe already from the north end of the straightaway going towards 91st Street because the water used to flow down the alley, down into a drain, into Montana, then would go out to the curb and run down the curb all the way to 84th Street. Then it would go back underground again until it got into a ditch at Echo Park, now called McCarty Park. I'm just wondering how many times I have to pay to have an alley put in? I mean, I, we paid once when it was changed over from gravel to pea gravel and tar. We paid again when it was, that was taken out and put in blacktop. And we paid again in '60 when he turned it into this big concrete slab.
Well, this...
Now we have to pay again?
This will last 50 years.
Last 50 years?
Every 50 years.
I sure hope I don't last 50 years. Anyway, I'm somewhat in favor of it, but I just don't like having to pay again. And there has to be some corrections on that, on the pitch of the alley into the center.
We can work on that.
And it would be nice if they would plow the whole alley. I have a, it's similar to a Sprinter, Ford Transit E350, 12-passenger van. I cannot park it on the street in front of my house because it's going to get hit because the parking area for cars in front of the house is too narrow since they widened our street. So that's another thing I'm against. And I'd like to know exactly when that area is going to be done so I can be out of state when that's done.
Well, you'll get a letter, and we'll tell you when we're, exactly when we're starting.
Okay, because I have other places to go in this country besides sit and watch my alley beat or up.
Okay.
So, okay.
We can accommodate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the members of the audience? Okay, we will close public hearing number one, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution relative to determination of special use permit for Columbus Club of West Alice, an existing Catholic fraternal organization, to be located at 7633 West Beloit Road.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Knights of Columbus are relocating from their current location on 92nd Street to the Rapida Shopping Center, showed in this overhead. Because it's an assembly, they'll be, it's a special use, and they'll be occupied about 1,300 square feet of Rapida's grocery store approximately in this area. They could have up to 30 members, that was their request. We have been discussing with the building department and the fire department, and they could theoretically go up to 50 members if the council should desire. Hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but they'd also be authorized to conduct administrative tasks during the normal business day. As we've mentioned, they could go up to 50 members if the council authorized it. The Knights of Columbus will be located in this portion of the building with the grocery store beat off to the right there, and they've already entered approved site and landscaping plan, and so no additional improvements will be required. 13 parking spaces are required for this particular use. The parking lot has about 114. The Park Commission has reviewed this proposal and has recommended approval, and if you have additional questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
John, so this isn't going to be like, I remember the Knights of Columbus, where they'd be booking events there. I mean, their capacity's going to be 30, so it wouldn't be like weddings or anything. It's just going to be strictly their meetings or some other small business-type meetings.
It would just be for their use.
Yes.
For the Knights of Columbus use, not for public...
Okay, thank you.
...use.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, seeing no questions, we will close public hearing number two, and I will ask clerk to read public hearing number three.
Resolution relative to determination of special use permit for Jose Vidrios Auto Repair, a proposed auto repair business to be located within the existing mixed-use building at 5606 West Burnham.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this particular site, they have had garage-type operations and other uses, but since it's been vacant for more than a year, the purpose requires a special use to be held, and that's the purpose of this here in this evening. In this facility, there'll be three uses and one residential use above there. The existing parking lot will be redefined, and there'll be additional landscaping throughout the property. The uses are going to be the auto garage, another business located in here, and then a landscaping, tree-cutting service. 13 parking stalls are required. They'll actually have 14. And the refuge that's currently proposed to be located over here, they now want to move it over next to the building and then put it into an enclosure, and that will be authorized with this special use. The heavy trucks that you currently see there will not be allowed to be on that site. They'll have to be located off-site, and I think that was the result of one of the objections that we've been hearing the most about as to where those trucks are going to be located. The Park Commission has reviewed this, and we've received all objections, but just that one question relative to the heavy trucks. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the council on public hearing number three? Seeing there are no questions, are there any comments or questions from our members of the audience? And again, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Thordick. I live at 5611 West Burnham, directly across from there. For a couple of years, he's had those heavy trucks. I know you had said that he's not going to be parked there, but he may, they may come during the day. My concern is where's all the repair shop's customers and employees going to park? Because we all share on-street parking. But the biggest one is the noise. When the previous owner had his car lot there and was given permission to work on cars that he sold, the noise was unbearable. He had loud music going, he had equipment inside the garage. I don't, I'm not a mechanic, so I don't know what equipment this was that made so much noise. I think he was supposed to keep his doors closed, that didn't happen. He was supposed to not paint, and I think he was painting because we could get the fumes by us. So my big question is, is if they're in violation of whatever you allow them to do, who's going to enforce it?
The, I would encourage you to contact me or your alderpersons, and if we find evidence of violation, we can revoke their special use permit.
Okay. Because right now, they're really good neighbors, and I'd like to keep it that way. I just think that it's open up a can of worms if they were repairing cars. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Are there any other comments or questions from the council, or the members of the audience, rather?
Hi, my name is Marge DeBlonicki. I live at 5615 West Burnham, which is, again, directly across the street next to Linda. My only concern was the noise, too, because the previous owner, they'd play their music really loud in the summer, you couldn't even leave your windows open. And a couple of times, we were told to call the police. Well, the police aren't there to enforce noise pollution, and so as long as we can call our aldermen and make complaints that way, and hopefully they'll be good neighbors and not be real noisy with the loud playing of the music and stuff like that. So that was my only concern, is in the summertime.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the members of the audience? Seeing none, we will close our third public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number four.
Resolution relative to determination of special use permit for Bonita's, a proposed restaurant to be located at 1412 South 73rd Street, submitted by Fernando Walker, applicant, and Dan Byer, architect.
Thank you. Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is proposing a sandwich shop to be located in this building on 73rd Street in the downtown area. It'll be a deli-type thing. There'll be no hood, no grease or oil, no alcoholic beverages. It's kind of a little, small little sandwich shop. There'll not be any seating in there, although not prohibited from having seating, but that's not currently proposed. 14 parking spaces will be required for this use, but they're adjacent to a city parking lot, so those are waived. The hours of operation are going to be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and it's more of a, like I said, a Subway deli-type shop with soft drinks. No alcoholic beverages will be served. The Park Commission has reviewed this project and has recommended approval, and we've received all objections to date. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the audience on this item? Seeing none, we will close our fourth public hearing, and I will ask clerk to read our fifth public hearing.
Ordinance to amend the official West Alice zoning map by removing the PDD-2 commercial overlay district from Lot 1 of the property located at 1010, 1040, 1126, and 1304 South 70th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this property is currently that we refer to as the East Office Building. That is virtually vacant, about 9%, 8% occupied. It's proposed to be demolished in about six months. As soon as that's demolished, the north, the hotel will be positioned in this north lot. Currently, there is a planned unit development district overlay, a zoning overlay, that will allow more than one building per lot. It's now the owner's intent to have certified survey maps created for each development. And there'll be this one hotel building and two or three additional certified survey maps for up to 300,000 square feet of more office space. So the purpose of the public hearing today is just to remove the planned, the PDD overlay district. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there comments or questions from the council on public hearing number five? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the audience on public hearing number Seeing that there are none, we will close our fifth public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, if I could, I would like to item the 2019-0188, 5606 West Burnham. I mean, I would like to hold it for now until the second council meeting. Because first of all, the gentleman who applied for, you know... Because first of all, the gentleman who applied for, you know, is not here. So, I have some questions from him before he gets his approval. Because, I mean, I'm tired from last time, from the other previous owner, the way he ran the operation there.
I'm sorry, which item is this, Alderman?
Yeah, the one on 56 and Burnham, the auto repair, the public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, item three, number three.
All right, we can bring that up in committee.
Yeah, we can do that, right?
Yeah.
Alderman, sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our agenda's item E, citizen participation. Members of the public can address the council during this period of our agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to about five minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Seeing none, we will wrap up citizen participation, and we will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during our recess this evening. Those room numbers are listed on your agendas on page two. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. I just have a couple things. First off, I want to publicly acknowledge and thank and congratulate our health commissioner, Sally Nuslock. The West Alice Health Department was one of the first four health departments in the nation to be reaccredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board, and we were the only city-level health department to pass in this first round. The others were either county, multi-county, or statewide agencies. So, our health commissioner and the staff at the health department have done a really wonderful job providing services to our community, and I just want to give them some public recognition. The other thing I want to briefly touch on is just the number of restaurants that we have had opening up recently in our community. Earlier today, alderperson Ranky and I were over at Blaze Pizza on Highway 100 and National, where they took a pretty much decrepit, horribly ugly, old tire store place and gave it a facelift and put a vibrant business in there. A couple of weeks ago, alderman Eric Oitnire and Marty Weigl and I were at Chilango Express on Lincoln Avenue, where they moved from a smaller space into a larger space. We've had Wild Roots open up right across from the West Alice Cheese and Sausage Shop on Beecher. And over this past weekend, we also had a Vietnamese restaurant open up on 105th and Greenfield, in the old Sammy's, Pho Saigon. They have Chinese and Vietnamese food. So, we've always had a lot of really good local restaurants, but we're getting even more, and there are more coming. So, I'm just asking people, if you're in that area and you want to stop and visit one of our new places, there's pretty much one on every corner of the city to check out. So, I want to congratulate them and wish them all success. That concludes the mayor's report. Do we have any alderpersons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigl?
I promised my wife I'd make a comment about this. Now that the snowbanks are 99 percent gone, I'd like to thank the residents and business owners that have taken a couple minutes to sweep up out in front of their houses and their businesses, because the city definitely looks better with 10 minutes with a broom. And I'd also ask the people that haven't had the time yet to maybe find some time this weekend. If we all chip in, it'll make the whole city nicer. I did just notice our big neighbor to the east raised the fine for littering from $50 to $500 today. So, maybe that's something we want to think about. And then, on the topic of picking up things, I know we have a lot of dog owners in the community, and most of you know that we're working on creating our own dedicated dog park here in the city of West Alice. And as a reminder to that end, the West Alice Community Improvement Foundation Annual Dinner Dance Gala this year, the dog park is the beneficiary. I will remind you, I believe today is the last day to buy your tickets online at the discounted price of $60. That includes dinner, music, I think we're gonna have an hour of beer at the beginning. Lots of great raffles and door prizes involved in that. The gala this year is Saturday, April 27th, at the Zufari Center or on Blue Mountain Road. There's all, full information is available on the city website. Again, we're fundraising for a dog park that will be, we're trying to make it free for West Alice residents, at least. And as a reminder, the dog park will be on the west side of town, kind of just east of Hale High School and south of the police station. And we're looking for construction to be this summer with a ribbon cutting this fall. So, but the Dinner Dance is our big fundraiser, again, Saturday, April 27th, at the Zufari Center. Thank you.
When you were talking about dogs and picking up, I didn't think you were gonna go to the gala. I thought you were gonna go somewhere else with that.
[laughing]
Thank you, Alderman Weigl. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysak?
I move for approval of minutes of the common council regular meeting of March 19th, 2019, and a special meeting of March 21st, 2019.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by alderperson Ranky. Are there any adjustments or amendments to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items not referred to committee, I will ask for a motion to send items seven through 12 to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Weigl, second by Alderman Barzak. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports, the license and health committee?
I'd like to report on items number 13 through 16 of tonight's agenda. These are various license and communications voted to place on file or approve, or in the case, number 16, to deny by four members, with one member being excused. I'd like to move for the adoption of this portion of the committee's report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Roeth. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And I have item number 17. This is a license that was voted for approval by three members, one member voting no and one member excused. I'd like to move for the adoption of the remainder of the committee's report.
Second.
For this discussion.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Roeth. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Roeth.
I will be changing my vote to no, because the applicant drove with a revoked license to the meeting.
And back.
And back.
Alderman Shapleski?
I also will be changing my vote from approval to no, because he was asked right there how he got here, and he says, I believe he said his girlfriend drove. So, I'll also be changing my vote to a no.
And just so, if everyone's not aware, there was evidence of him leaving the city hall parking lot and getting into his car and driving away on our security cameras out there.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, physically, there is any evidence of this man driving without a license, don't have a driver's license? I mean, is that really facts?
There was a video of city hall footage of him walking out, and correct me if I'm wrong, and getting into his car in the parking lot and driving off. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Devine?
Alderman Barzak?
And just to clarify, because I think I know where Vince is going, I was not there, but my understanding is that at the committee, that he was asked, how did you get here tonight? That the committee knew he did not have a driver's license, and he was asked, how did you get here tonight? And he said, my girlfriend drove me. And then there's video evidence of there's no girlfriend, he jumped in the car and drove the car away. So, number one, he lied directly to the committee. Number two, he doesn't have a driver's license, which to me is irresponsible as can be, getting in a vehicle and driving away. So, I'll cast my vote when it's my turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Motion is to approve, correct?
The motion is to approve, and it has been seconded. If there's no other discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shapleski?
No.
Oitnire?
No.
Haas? I'm sorry, Lysak?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Roeth?
No.
Vatali?
No.
Weigl?
No.
Barzak?
No.
That's eight nos.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Weigl?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the license.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to deny. Is there any discussion? On the motion to deny, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Shapleski?
Aye.
Oitnire?
Aye.
Lysak?
Aye.
Ranky?
Aye.
Roeth?
Aye.
Vatali?
Aye.
Weigl?
Aye.
And Barzak?
Aye.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysak?
First, I'd like to note that item 37 on the agenda, which was initially referred to safety and development, is being changed to be referred to Public Works Committee. And then, I'd like to move that we recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Barzak. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are in recess.